Business zoning district shown on the Sessas map. Thirty-five A, Pasol A sixteen, and owned by South Middlesex Nonprofit Housing Corporation. The applicant proposes to operate a residential nonprofit educational facility at an existing building. The board will be making a determination that the proposed site plan shows conformance with lot size and parking requirements. The application can be reviewed in the town hall, at the clerk's office, in the planning department during regular business hours. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the place, date, time designated, or submit written comments to the planning board. And I'll read in any written comments we have received to date on this application. It may be out of order, but bear with me. Dated Wednesday, June eighth, two thousand and eleven, from Sherri Bemis, the chief of police of the fire in EMS. Mary, I referenced two sixty-sixth Main Street. I have two questions, a comments, a fire alarm system would be needed, and I question if a sprinkler is needed. Obviously, that will be an Adele thing. Thank God, Adele is here to hear that. Okay. Okay. Dated June thirteenth, two thousand and eleven, to the planning board, from Jim Malley, health inspector. Site plan review, nonprofit education facility at two sixty-sixth Main Street. Dear Board members, the board of health is in receipt of a site plan submitted by South Middlesex Nonprofit Housing Corporation. The plans were prepared by Semotes Consulting Incorporated, civil engineers and land surveyors of Boston, Massachusetts. The existing building is a three-bedroom home situated on a twenty-four thousand, three-hundred and seventy-six square foot lot. The proposed use is for a sixteen-room congregate housing. According to documentation submitted, it appears that there will be sixteen single occupancy bedrooms for the proposed residence. If this is, in fact, the case, then under three-ten CMR fifteen Title V State Sanitary Code for the disposal of onsite sewage, this will be classified as new construction and an upgrade to the septic system is required. Additionally, the pasel is located in a DEP Zone Two, as defined in the Massachusetts Drinking Water Regulations. Three-ten CMR twenty-two point oh-two, Zone Two, and is considered a nitrogen-sensitive area. Any new on-light sewage, onsite sewage disposal on the site, on a site in a nitrogen-sensitive area is subject to nitrogen loading limits. And I got a memorandum to the planning board from Rhonda Deodros, our DPW civil engineer and for two sixty-sixth Main Street site plan review. The town of Oxford DPW was requested to review and comment on the site plan's conformance with the town of Oxford zoning bylaws. I have conducted a general review, and my comments are below. On chapter eleven. One, it appears that the provided driveway access is approximately twelve feet. The provided driveway for two-way access shall have a throat of no less than twenty-four feet. Two, the submitted plan shows nine parking spaces. The provided off-street parking spaces shall be equal to or greater than the required spaces under the proposed use. The proposed use most closely fits within commercial use, category D, which requires sixteen parking spaces. Three, the provided aisle width is approximately twelve feet. Parking areas containing more than five parking spaces shall meet the dimensional standards specified in section four point one. According to table four, the minimum aisle width for two-way traffic shall be twenty-four feet. Under chapter fifteen, one, adequate lighting screening shall be shown on the plan. Two, provisions for proposed sewage to prevent pollution of groundwater must be provided. The site is located within the DEP wellhead protection area, Zone Two nitrogen-sensitive area. And a pasel is approximately one-half an acre, according to Massachusetts Title Five. No system serving new construction in a nitrogen-sensitive area designated in CMR three-ten CMR fifteen point two point one-five shall be designed to receive or shall receive more than four hundred gallons of design flow per day per acre, except as set forth in at three-ten CMR fifteen point two sixteen. Aggregate flows are fifteen point two seventeen. Enhanced nitrogen removal and general engineering review comments. If dumpsters to be used, provide access area on the plan. Two, location and size of proposed sign shall be shown on the plan, if any. And I do have another email here from town council. Basically, this has been addressed that would basically not here for the use, but addressing parking and the general contents of the lot. That's all I have at this time, and I'm not going to read that entire thing. If people have questions, we can address it as it goes by. So would the proponent like to address the plan with the public?
Sure. Hi, I'm Kathryn Garahan from the law firm of Bowditch and Dewey, representing the applicant. And to my left is Michael Komisky, who is the director of real estate development for the applicant. Also with us is Ted Doucette, who's the engineer from Sammy Otis Consulting, and Ken Will Lannan, who is the director of construction at South Middlesex Nonprofit Housing.
Okay.
I thought, I was planning to go through some background, just procedurally, and some general points about the application and the matters before you. And Michael Komisky was going to talk about the project a little bit, and then Ted Doucette was going to give some more details about the plan, which he has on the easel. Ken is also available to answer any questions about the construction. And is it your process that you ask questions as we go, or did you want us to go straight through, and then you ask questions?
I guess, from a board's point of view, we'll interrupt where we feel we would like to get something answered at that time.
Okay.
So, go ahead and start.
Okay. First, I just thought I'd give a little background on the site itself. The site goes back to eighteen thirty. It's been in its present dimensions. It was originally a residential structure built by the person who came to town to run the Oxford Woolen Mills. And the property at that point began its long association with Grace Church. The family was instrumental in founding Grace Church, and that relationship has pretty much continued over time between this lot and the church. The lot has been residential, both single and multifamily. It's been a residential plus a dentist's office. It's been dentist's office and medical office, and it's also been for church use. The applicant purchased the property from the church two years ago. I think it was two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine, yep.
Yeah. And maintains a good relationship with the church. The proposed use, as the chairman has stated, is nonprofit educational use. It's a single-room occupancy-supported housing residence for up to fifteen residents plus one resident manager. So, one person is in charge and on a twenty-four-seven basis, and fifteen residents. This is, in a way, an unusual matter before site plan review because of the interplay with the Dover Amendment, which I assume the town council got into in the email. There's some question in state law whether Dover Amendment projects go before site plan review, but they're certainly limited by the allowable Dover Amendment issues. And there's a criteria applied of reasonability, as opposed to strict compliance with zoning bylaws or ordinances. The applicant wants to work well with the town and the neighbors and neighborhood, and didn't oppose coming for site plan review. And as I assume is in the town council email, as well as the letter the applicant received in March from building commissioner Reynolds, the issues before the planning board are the lot size and the parking plan. First, in determining the lot size, this property is within the CB district, where the zoning provides that the planning board will determine the appropriate lot size based on minimum width, maximum coverage, setback in parking. In trying to prepare for this meeting and make our arguments as to why we believe this lot size is appropriate for the project, certainly the neighboring sizes were of interest, and this appears to be one of the larger lots in going, say, twenty or so properties either way down Main Street. Also, the lot has been in its present dimensions since eighteen fifty-four, which would imply some appropriateness of the size. Has continued over time for the size structure. Also, in terms of the similar programs the applicant runs in other communities, this lot size is on the larger size of what the applicant has used for similar types of residential So we would, oh, and additionally, all the other, if you take lot size apart, which is determined by the planning board, the other relevant dimensional measurements of the structure and the property all comply with zoning. So it would seem all of that adds up to a lot that's of appropriate size for the project and the property. Going, I don't know if people have questions about lot size?
I just have one question about the staff size. Are you saying there's only one staff member?
There's one twenty-four-seven, and I don't know, Michael?
There's one onsite resident manager. That's one of the sixteen.
And what about for the educational purposes, and I would assume there'd be staff for that?
Yeah, there'll be program managers visiting the site.
Visiting, or?
Visiting the site and, you know, helping the residents.
Meaning they need parking, so.
Right. Yeah, on a daily basis. And then, there's also off-site programs as well, educational programs that they go off-site for.
How do they go off-site to those programs?
They can take a bus, they can take, you know, we have a van, we can provide transportation, and some might have cars.
But typically, how much staff will be there during the daytime?
It's only partially during the day, a couple hours out of the day, there'll be one or two.
One or two.
Program managers.
I think we were told in our letter from town council that there would be two full-time staff members. I'm trying to find it here. But now, you're telling us it's going to be one?
Well, there's one onsite resident manager that lives in the building.
It'd take me a minute to find it, but I thought it said there'd be a manager and an assistant at all times.
Dedicated to the property. That's the case. But there'll be one onsite resident manager.
I think the distinction is one live-in.
Right.
Manager versus staff that will be visiting for periods of time during the day.
Right. But there'll be program managers.
Right.
Yeah, and that may have come out to be like a full-time equivalent of two, you know.
One live-in, just so that we're clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you're ready, would you like me to start talking about parking? Is that?
Very much so. And as a matter of fact, I'm going to tell you that the parking requirements are going to be put on your site plan. We want to know what they are. Okay? And that's going to determine what is the reasonable amount of parking. Okay? So if these people are not going to have cars, you're going to fess up to that, and you're going to tell us that, and there won't be any allowance for them to have cars. And if there's a problem, that's going to end up with, it's going to be your problem because we're going to work with you to determine the amount of parking that you feel is substance enough for your application.
Okay.
And I believe there is no off-site parking. Okay? As far as on Main Street, I think there is no parking in that area. Okay? There is no on-street parking. Okay? So all our decisions are going to be based upon what you do on a daily basis within your confines of your property.
The, I guess, good place to start are the closest uses. This is not a commercial use, even though I know in the Department of Public Worth memo, that's what was looked to.
She was going towards that, and I agree.
Unfortunately, there is no nonprofit educational use laid out, so we have to go to analogous uses. We had looked at a range, on the low end being something like a rest home, on the high end being something like a lodging house, as being the, and there's quite a difference between the two in terms of what would be required. A rest home of this size would require three parking spaces. A lodging house of this size would require fifteen. So that's the range, you know, starting out. The second consideration was a real desire to minimize the disturbance of the property, to try to keep that garage that's existing in place, if possible. You know, think about the aesthetics for the neighborhood and the streetscape, preserving open space. So those issues were all considered as well. In addition, the use, what would be required? What do we see at the applicant's other programs in other towns? And the, Michael will probably speak to this more, but it seems that nine is about the number because the residents of these programs do not universally have cars. It's, there's, the staff, we always need to make sure there's parking for the staff, you know, so in this case, at least two spaces for staff. But for residents, it's a much lower percentage. Mostly people, when they come into the program, don't have cars. They may during the course in time as their income status improves with jobs and training.
I have a question, if I can interrupt. So you would have no problem if this got to this point, that we said at no time will any residents be allowed to have a vehicle?
No residents?
Right.
Well, that wouldn't fit with what we have in other locations, because over time, when people get there.
So you're saying now, then that residents could have cars here? People living there could have a vehicle?
Well, when the program opens up, because everyone will be new, very likely, no one will. But, you know, because...
I guess we need to look at their entire living there.
But the entire time, and then as it's...
So at some point, there's likelihood that they will have their own vehicle.
As there's overturn, right, and there's a mix of new and older people.
I just want to make that point clear, because, you know, you're saying it starts off with none, but in theory, you could have twelve people with cars there.
No, it would be a problem if you said no cars.
The other thing is, and I just want to point this out, and I apologize for interrupting you, but I think sometimes if we can deal with these points, according to town council, and I'm reading right from what they said, it says, "As set forth in that decision," talking about parking, municipality may not regulate through zoning, wait a minute, sorry, let me get to the right page here, "regarding the number of parking spaces and it being a commercial use." This is town council. "In my opinion, the proposed use most closely fits within commercial use, category D, which includes group dwellings, although planning board may determine otherwise." So if I go to the table, under commercial group D, it says hotels, motels, country ends, rooming, lodging houses in groups, group dwellings, which I would say this has probably fallen to that group, you need one room, one parking space per room.
Right.
So, according to our bylaw and town council, the people that are going to have to defend us in this, and if I'm overinterpreting this, I need Adele and, you need sixteen spaces just for the people that live there. And that's why I asked the question, if at any point, will residents have their own vehicles? So we don't know that. You could have none. At some point, you could have twelve.
Right.
Obviously, there's some play in there. But I just want to point out what we're looking at in terms of parking, in terms of what town council's telling us.
Right. Well, this isn't a, you know, it's not a lodging house, so it's an analogous use. So he went to the upper end, you know, when I said the range of rest home to lodging house, he went right to the upper end. I mean, I used fifteen because that's how many residents, as opposed to the staff, but...
We actually run a number of buildings like this, and based on our experience, we see, you know, twenty-five to thirty-five percent of the residents may have cars at some point. So you're looking at, you know, on a building like this, especially a building that's, you know, on a bus route and near downtown, you're not going to see as many cars. So twenty-five to thirty-five percent, you're looking at, you know, what, four to six cars from the residents.
I mean, are they allowed visitors?
Yep. Yep.
So you need visitor parking. So that has to go on the table, on the plan. That's what I'm saying. You have to break out all the parking, and what it's needed for.
And you also said that staff will be coming in there conducting seminars, right?
Yep.
And the other issue is, I mean, I was just keep asking you the questions, while we've interrupted you already. How's food and other products going to be delivered there? Is there, you know, where's the truck going to park to bring in the food and all that other stuff? Is it going to use the same driveway that the parking?
Well, and the residents actually get their own food.
They do. So there'll be no deliveries of anything in it? Okay.
But I think the point that we're trying to make, especially about the parking stuff, is when we look at the plan, which we have here.
Yep.
We want to see this plan that says sixteen spaces and all of these comments.
Whatever it is, eleven spaces, nine spaces, whatever it is, I want to know what they are.
We want to see it on the plan.
Right.
Okay. So just that we're clear.
And I guess we're trying to determine what's the number.
Yeah. So right now, we're looking at the plan, we see nine. We're saying we need to see, what, sixteen, fifteen, sixteen?
No, we don't know yet.
We're working at that.
Yeah, we don't know.
We don't know what the number is.
But at the end of the day, we want to see it on the plan.
But there has to be designated spots for the staff, visitors.
The other issue is, and Rhonda brought this up, I look at the nine parking spaces that you have. To me, the likelihood of people using that is almost negligible. You need a twenty-four-foot aisle for two-way traffic. At one point, you've got twelve feet, it looks like, from the parking space to the building. I mean, if someone's parked in space seven and nine, I don't see how someone that wants to get into parking spot eight is going to have the room to get in there. It's extremely tight, okay? It meets half of what we require, but then I'm looking, I say, okay, let's see, what does someone need to back out of a parking space, you know, and leave the parking lot? If someone was trying to come in off of Route Twelve, and someone was exiting, the person on Route Twelve is going to be stuck there until that person can get out. The other thing I noticed is that where the handicap ramp is, you've got about fourteen feet where someone will be backing up towards the handicap ramp. That's a safety concern, in my opinion. Okay? I look at this plan, I want to get to the main point right here. It looks to me like you have enough land to put in fourteen, sixteen parking spaces and meet all of our requirements. If you go to the north side of that building, you've got approximately thirty feet from the building to the property line, which means you could put a driveway in, you could go in the back, put in fourteen, sixteen, whatever parking spaces we determine as relevant, avoid any safety issues, and get the parking behind the building. And I say this because, you know, I don't want you to think, I think the service you people provide society is tremendous, and we need institutions like you. But I think you also have a responsibility to think about the town and the residents that live there, and to do everything that you can do to make sure that the quality of life for the folks that live in that area, you know, doesn't deteriorate. I had someone stop me on the street the other day, an elderly woman, saying, Norman, I walk up and down that street all the time. I don't want people sitting on the front porch harassing me. Now, the likelihood of that's probably not going to happen, but these are the fears that people have in the town right now. And I just want to make sure that you folks do everything that you can to kind of alleviate those fears. That's where I'm coming from right now. So maybe, have you looked into putting the parking behind the building? Is that something that you guys have looked at?
We've looked at, you know, a range of plans, and, you know, Ted may go into more details when he speaks. The reasons that we chose this were the ones, you know, that I mentioned before, trying to disturb the land as little as possible, the aesthetics, how it looks for Main Street, instead of, you know, having driveways on both sides, or potentially losing the garage, things like that. So there's definitely compromises.
I looked at that, and I said, jeez, you'd hate to see him move the garage. It's kind of, it's got the potential of being a nice building, and I see the people working on it, they have a great reputation, I'm sure they'll do a good job. But, you know, we're trying to weigh that thing of safety and adequate parking and, you know, keeping the quality of life of people that live in that area, and, yeah, aesthetics. I think the work you're going to do in that building alone is going to make it much better. And so I'm looking at this, that you're providing a service for the town, and you're going to improve the site, but we really like, I'd like to see you work a little bit more with us on the parking, that's all.
Would this be a helpful time for Ted to talk about the plan, and then?
Sure.
Maybe we'd come back if you have questions for Michael about the project itself.
Well, how do you feel? I didn't mean to interrupt you, but if you've got more information or, I mean, I'm trying to cut to the chase here, because that's the big issue that I have.
And I'm sure the public has concerns that you'd be more able to adjust than us. So maybe we're more interested in the plan.
Yeah. No, I think it's a good time to jump to that.
We're trying to focus on what town council tells us we need to focus on.
Right.
Yeah, Ted, if it's good for you.
Well, what I'm hearing from Mr. LeBlanc, again, Ted Doucette from Sammy Otis Council, is it appears that there's a way to meet the regulations. So let's try to meet the regulations before we start looking at variances, or, you know, varying from regulations. And I put this over here because I thought it'd be better for everybody to see. So we have a twelve-foot wide entrance coming in, and we drove up and down the street, we saw some other twelve-foot wide entrances where we'd have parking on behind the building. So I guess the thing that we really want to establish tonight is, where is the planning board? Are we trying to meet this strictly? Are we going to follow similar things that are in the neighborhood with, you know, maybe a twelve-foot drive, and, you know, possibly someone having to wait here, or someone having to wait up here? I guess, I mean, I'm hearing most of what I think from Mr. LeBlanc, but we really want to meet this.
But I'm not speaking for the whole board, so you need to hear it from them. I'm telling you what I'd like to hear.
Yeah, and it'd be a good time to get that information and find out. I understand what spaces you want, spaces labeled, two for staff, nine for residents, you know, one for whatever.
I just want a table that qualifies what all the parking is going to be used for. If you're looking for something less than strict conformance of sixteen, let's put sixteen as that magic number. Okay? If you're going to go less than that, we want to know what the parking's going to be used for, okay? And some assurance that you can live within that parking. Okay? I'll just put it right out there. McDonald's, if they went by our bylaw, their property didn't conform either. We dropped the parking down because their businesses changed, and they showed us, our planning board, that most of their business is drive-through, and not much of it is going in there and sitting and parking and going in the restaurant anymore. Okay? So, yeah, bylaws don't address every issue, okay? But we want to know, we want to have some confidence that the numbers you give us, you can live with. Okay? That's basically it. You can live with, because there will be no discretion as far as you guys parking on Main Street. Okay? That type of thing. So go ahead. Go ahead and present.
Well, I think Mr. LeBlanc has something. Yeah, I'll be real straight with where I'm coming from. I mean, we've got a memorandum here from our DPW civil engineer outlines seven issues, eight issues. I'd like to see these seven or eight issues addressed within the plan, and once I saw them addressed within the plan, then I would feel very comfortable on voting on the plan. So this document, I think, is very key at this point in terms of addressing some of the key issues that we have.
Did you guys get a copy of that memo, by the way?
We did, yes, we did.
You did get one, okay. You know, no one ever thinks of a dumpster, and that's the last thing people think about. We think about it first, because we know that's, you know, board of health issue, safety, of dealing with all your rubbish, so.
Rich, Dawn brings a... Rich, Don brings a good point. I think we should take these one at a time, and I guess we're talking right now about the parking.
Yeah.
And I guess in fairness to these folks, why don't we kind of give them an idea of what we want? I told you basically what I'd like to see. I'd be interested to see what other members of the board's, you know, board feel about it. Personally, I'd like to see the driveway on the other side and the parking behind the building. And I think we need to determine a number of what that is. I'd be interested to see what the rest of the board feels about that.
I'm feeling pretty strongly about 16 spaces between enough spaces for the residents of the house, for staff visiting, for the onsite manager, for visitors. I think 16 spaces is one of our requirements.
Could I just, just have Michael reiterate how much, how many parking spaces we tend to see used at similar projects, just for an idea, you know?
I heard that before. I guess my question, back to you folks, is, is there an admission requirement in the program for residents not to have cars? And if the answer to that question is, you know, there's no requirement, in other words, they can have cars, then you have the possibility of 15 cars in that facility. And so, you know, that is a reality, because you don't have a policy in place to say, no, you cannot have a car. So you have 15 residents, that's 15 spaces, you've got an onsite manager, that's one more, you've got people come in during the day to do their counseling, that's one or two more, you've got visitors. We're talking at least 16 spaces.
Most people will be out at work during the day.
Correct. I mean, I'm sure you probably just, there's probably peak times when there are more people there than not, people, more people visiting, whether it's weekends or during the holidays. I mean, at other sites, how does that?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, in general, we don't have all the spots filled up. I mean, if we have, if we designate 11 spots or nine spots for this building, four of them would, in general, would be residents with cars. And then, you know, the program managers coming in and out during the day, so that's a couple more, and maybe a couple visitors. But like Kathy said, in general, during the week, people are off at work, so the parking lot's empty. On a holiday, you know, not everybody's in the building, people are visiting families and going off to places. So I think in general, the lot isn't going to be maxed out.
I mean, is there a policy on how many visitors can visit a resident? Is there?
To visit one resident?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying if a whole.
One friend at a time.
No, no, during the holiday.
People.
No, but during the holidays, you know, we're going to spend it with.
Yeah, you know, truthfully, I'm not a program person, so that kind of detail I wouldn't know. But I think in general, you know, you're not going to see 16 residents in the building with visitors.
Okay. Let me ask you, what do you think a fair number is?
Well, I think that we've thought through this number that we've presented.
Nine?
Yeah, I mean, we've walked through that number. I mean, nine with the possibility of using the garage for a couple more, you know? I think, like I say, these people, this is affordable housing, these people don't make a lot of money, you know? There's restrictions on their income to live in this building, they're not going to be, they don't have the disposable income to drive a car. I mean, at four bucks a gallon, no one's, you know, especially when there's a bus right there. You know, the bus is right there, they can walk downtown.
They're at nine, we're at 16, so we need to keep talking about that.
Yeah.
You know, my biggest issue is getting it in the back of the building, and meeting the requirements, so people can, you know, get in and out safely, and if someone wants to pull in, there's someone pulling out, the person pulling in doesn't have to wait.
So do you want, you want to see 16 spots in the back of the building?
I'm not saying 16 yet. I'm saying I'd like to see the parking in the back, and the driveway on the other side used, because now you can provide us with a safe access and a safe turnaround area for people to come in and out. We don't have people backing up onto a handicap ramp in a tight area. That's what I'm looking for. I guess we can continue the discussion about the number of spaces.
Number of spaces, yeah.
I'd like to get a feel from the rest of the board. I mean, if you guys want to keep it on this side, that's fine. I try to be fair to these people and, you know, get some kind of direction, but that's kind of what I'm looking for. The other thing is, you've got the railroad tracks in the back there, so there's no, people might shoot me, but there doesn't seem to be any real immediate butter back there. You know, you've got the railroad tracks, and then you've got folks on Park Street, so there's a buffer zone there. So those are all the reasons that I'd like to see it back there. Safety, people being to use it easily, and you do have the railroad tracks as a buffer zone.
Yeah, no, I look at that side parking, it's very difficult for cars to maneuver.
I hear a lot of points, the one that I feel may not be possible, or the one that is less likely is getting it onto this side. Here, we already have disturbed area and paved. This curb cut that you may be looking at here is not on their property. They already have an existing curb cut here, so what I'm hearing from you is that you want, you don't want that queuing, which requires to go to what the DPW engineer requires, the 24-foot.
Right.
You have the disturbed area over here, so hopefully come back, meeting three-quarters of your.
Yeah, I'm not.
You'll understand there's a reason that we didn't take everything under advisement.
And the only other way would be to take down the garage to access that on the other side.
And, you know, again, so that's not my reasoning either. You know, they may say, look, you know, we want to keep this structure, let's flip-flop, and we'll tear this up, we'll pave this, so, but I think.
There's another building not too far from you, and the reason I know it, I used to work there, is the old post office. And that's basically the situation, they have a narrow driveway, all the parking is in the back, so people can come in. If somebody's leaving, then he sees someone come in, and they wait in the back of the building, let the person come in and then go out. So, you know, if that's one way you want to present it, I would certainly be willing to look at that.
Just one. Just one thought about parking in the back. Another requirement that's on this memo talks about sewage and updating the sewage system. It looks like on your plan, there is a plan for a proposed septic system in the back of that lot. So I don't know if proposing parking on top of a septic field or whatever is a doable solution.
It's doable.
Oh, yeah.
You can do that.
Just want to note it, thank you very much. Yeah.
Might cost more, but you can do it.
It can be done, thank you very much. So, okay. Good.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I mean, from the memo, it looks like they might end up with a tight tank setup of some sort, because 440 gallons is not 16 bedrooms. I believe it's 110 per bathroom, correct? Or per bedroom, you mean?
110 per bedroom, but there's also, you know, it's not two people per bedroom, so this is something that we have to.
All right. All right. The 440 gallons per day is per acre, you have a half-acre lot, that brings you down to a two-bedroom home, it's just.
There's a lot of things that we can do to work this through with the planning board on.
Okay.
Yeah, so those issues really aren't.
That's a separate issue.
Those aren't for us.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
But we do like to ask the question, because we need, you know, you're asking us to prove this to 15, and.
Well, we don't want to have parking and then find out that, you've got to put a sewage disposal system that destroys part of the parking too.
Yeah, no, it's.
So it'd be best to you to work in tandem with both these issues.
Clear how they work together.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, just, you know, Norman's looking for some opportunities on the board. I have to say, I agree with where he's coming from, and I also agree with you, it's a site plan requirement that we have the parking table on there. Once we get to, once they determine the number, they're going to put on the plan. But I also agree with Norman that, as I look at this plan, you know, we have a 12-foot throat at the front, we go halfway back, we got 12-foot four, and I notice that still keeps moving up. You know, just correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at 11 feet, it just, it gets narrower and narrower as we get back to the rear of the lot where the parking is. Like Norm said, I.
Yeah, some of those.
I don't know how somebody's going to enter parking spot eight if someone's in seven.
Could be non-accessible, once one car is in one certain space, the other cars can't maneuver around it. That's an issue. We've got to look at the maneuverability of all cars in all spaces.
That gets back to one of the issues on this memo, and then talks about a throat width of 24 feet.
Which isn't possible on that particular side.
That's it, what I'm trying to point is, we'll address.
Right.
Getting in and out, two-way traffic.
Okay.
But it's only 12 feet, but if someone's coming out, you have to arrange a touch away, they can see someone coming in, they've got to let, I mean, it's just something that you've got to make work. I think it's a lot better.
Well, see, that's what we talked about earlier, there's clear sightlines from either side of the streets, to see if someone's coming in or out.
They still have to wait in the street while someone's coming out.
But, well, not really, because.
Feeling is that unacceptable, whatnot.
Well, 12 feet, 14 feet wide, that's wide enough for a car to pull in and maybe another one to pull. You can get them both off the street. You can't do that if you've got 19 feet taken up by a car parked there, and now you only got 12. But the paved area, I believe, is like 33 feet in that area, right?
Well, I would say the area of what?
Of the parking?
Yeah. You've got a 12-foot throat, but right after you get on, be on the sidewalk, that widens out to like 30-something feet. The problem is, you've got cars parked there right now. If there's no cars parked there, then someone can come off the street, pull to the right, and someone can get through that 12-foot.
Yeah, we're not asking for, we're not asking for the 20-foot apron if there is a means of two-way maneuverability in that area.
Right.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to further that point, if someone's backing up out of space two or three, there is no room for a car coming in at the same time.
Right.
And that's the whole, that's the basis of the 24-foot wide requirement, but I mean, obviously, it's not possible on.
By not allowing the parking on the side there, you'll have 24 feet except for where you come in off of Main Street. And I think it's reasonable to think someone's going to, I would hope, stop and let someone come in and then go out.
I don't look at this as a commercial, the commercial-type business where you'll have constant in-and-out traffic.
Right.
You're going to be in, there for a long time, and go out, just like if you own that home and you were using it as residence. Had three kids and five cars in the lot, you know? Same type of thing.
Mm-hmm. Adele had her hand up.
Adele? Sure.
Only because you're on the subject.
Sure.
Please. That's really the only subject we really.
Well, I mean, as far as talking about the specifics and custom moving, one thing that I did notice, you don't show a handicap space.
They're not labeled, but they are laid out, yes.
Okay, because I know that you went for variance to the structure issues, to the access board, but I didn't see anything there asking for variance on the space, so trying to figure out.
Well, the space is shown, if you see, there's an eight-foot space here with an eight-foot area next to it, it's just not all labeled.
That's not a state.
Well, we didn't really notice if that was left there for whatever storage for trash or whatnot, if they're going to have a trash truck coming to pick it up, they're going to have no room to get it in.
We discussed trash, and they're most likely going to a 55-gallon two-wheelers, and then they'll have to pay for the delivery to come up, come pick them up, load them, and then, you know, the onsite manager, give them something to do every Wednesday, right?
For a 16-bed unit, you're going to have just.
No, we said just two, we said, but they're going to use those instead of getting a.
Yeah.
Dumpster.
Not going to have a dumpster, in other words, even though you'll have to have an area to.
Does need an area to put them, yeah.
But the thing is, if you get to the back of that building, behind it, you've got room to put a dumpster, and an easy way for a truck to get in and get out. I mean, it does solve some other problems, too.
I'm not seeing.
No, I know.
You're off the water.
You're the first one.
The other issue that came up, and I know that you received a short memo from Chief Bemis regarding the structure, but hadn't really reviewed the site plan regarding that 12-foot aisleway.
That's going to be a problem with a fire truck.
Right.
Right.
None of the apparatus that they have would actually be able to function within that aisleway. They wouldn't be able to put the outriggers out, the apparatus, according to them, would be within the collapse zone. There's no way that it would reach it from the street. So pretty much, any maneuvers or operations needed to be done from that, from the apparatus in that driveway would be unsafe for the firefighters, not to mention.
Adele, let me ask you this, though. If we took the parking out of there, you got, it looks, I'm doing my math quickly, you got 12, and you got roughly 33 feet of pavement there. Would they be able to function at that point?
If they moved the parking, then, yeah.
In that area.
For in more accessible.
So it would help the fire department, and also would give you access to the back of the building, so.
What's the apparatus they're talking about, the ladders, the ladder trucks?
Right. The bucket brigade.
Right.
It's a 33-foot building, I mean, you've got to get the tower.
No.
You've got to get up to those up.
I mean, that's why we have a public hearing. There's more benefits now than just parking, to get that parking in the back.
That's right. I mean, you're not going to get an occupancy permit, the fire chief don't sign off on it. And we can approve your, we can approve your plan, but she's not going to give you an occupancy permit if she can't get apparatus in there.
No, they can.
I just wanted to make sure the vote was.
Thank you.
Oh, that was, thank you, Adele, that was an important point.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
So we're all set?
Since we're on the fire point, the building is going to be fully sprinkled and fire-alarmed.
Good.
It's all state-of-the-art, we always sprinkle our buildings with fire alarms.
We should hear from the public.
Hey, wait, you got anything else you want to address?
I understand, I understand, someone comes up with something.
All right, all right, well.
Your exercise.
I do want to turn it over to the public, because obviously, we're going to have to continue this, so we can, you guys can look at your parking and what this whole scenario with parking, so. And I saw a hand up over there before. Yes, sir, can you come up to the mic, please?
The other thing we might want to do too, Rich, is try to determine some kind of a number to help them come back and do their plan.
Hi, I'm Father Zadie from Grace Church. I'd just like a point of clarification. You said there was no parking on Main Street, but there is.
Well, I'm not sure where it's at on there.
No, our, our people park there all the time when they come to Mass, at, at services Saturday and Sunday, and other people are parking there also constantly, so, just in terms of people, I think, who would come in perhaps to lead a seminar or whatnot, there is plenty of parking right on Main Street there.
Adele's got another question.
Yeah, well, I'll leave that up, we, we try to get as much of our parking off, off the Main Street.
I just wasn't sure why you were saying that, whether it was something I didn't know, and our people shouldn't be parking there.
Mr. Chairman.
No, you don't have to cancel. How about during the winter parking ban, that's, that's only for commercial deliveries on, on Main Street, correct?
You're right.
Why's I mean, we wouldn't have residential parking on, during the winter parking ban.
I did check with the parking issue, there, there is no parking signs, but it's for the crosswalk, it's right at the crosswalk, and you can't park within ten feet of the front and the back of the crosswalk, and, but because of the winter ban, it would not be, they wouldn't be able to use those spaces as permanent spaces to include in their parking calculation.
Right, agreed.
In other words, we would like to see all the, all the parking that this facility needs park on their own property.
Yes.
Okay.
Can we force you? Probably not, but we'd like you to do it.
I think we can come back with a number.
I mean.
We can come back and show what we feel is comfortable, what we feel is, I have a pretty good understanding.
Come on up.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Jennifer Balistrachi, I live on fourteen Power Hill Road, and I just have one clarification to ask, as far as your educational facility and your, your home component, is this considered a sober-living facility, halfway house type setting?
It has that component, yes.
Okay, so, as a concerned parent and a resident of Oxford, you know, I have some serious concerns about this type of setting, mainly because it is adjacent to a preschool, which has approximately thirty-five, forty children under the ages of five years old, and this preschool has been in existence for over twenty-five years, or twenty-five years, I think twenty-six years, actually. You know, I, I am a social worker, so I'm not a critic, but I do know that, you know, these types of settings have some behaviors that go hand-in-hand, criminal activity, pedo, you know, pedophilia, you know, so there's some, some, you know, concerns that I have about, you know, these particular individuals. We are therapeutic, I understand your mission and your philosophy behind your program, but I also, as an advocate for children as well, would like to protect their best interests, I would like to protect their safety, so I wanna know what it is that you are gonna do to ensure that, you know, what is your program gonna do to make sure that these children who have been in this preschool for this many years are protected? Because I do think that, just as though people with alcoholism or drug addiction are, you know, fall under the Americans with Disabilities Act, children also have many rights as well, they are protected class, so, you know, I, I wanna know what is gonna be done, particularly, you know, are you gonna be screening these individuals? Are they, are you gonna allow registered sex offenders to be able to be a part of your program?
Excuse me for a minute, I think we're having some technical difficulties, and I didn't.
Someone said the mic's, microphone's not on, apparently.
Oh, it's good.
Home cannot hear questions that are being asked.
We're directive.
You wanna start over?
Just go close, you can go closer to the mic.
So, my concerns are, A, are you going to screen these individuals? Can you protect the children in that preschool, which has been in existence, and tell me that there's not gonna be any registered sex offenders or violent criminal offenders that are gonna be allowed to live there? You know, another thought that I have would be that, you know, a condition might be that an eight-foot fence, or a fence high enough to kinda separate this program with this preschool be installed in between this facility. You know, I wanna know where these residents can hang out during the day, especially during recess time, you know, can we kinda designate an area during the hours of seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, where these people can hang outside? I do have a concern with the fact that there is fifteen residents to one resident manager. You know, I actually spoke with the Rhodes Street Program, not the program, rather, with the Milbury Police, in regards to Five Rhodes Street in Milbury, which is a similar halfway house setting, and they have had five calls since January to that program, this year, ten, ten or more calls last year. So, how is this one particular resident manager gonna manage a crisis, fifteen residents with twenty-five kids next door? You know, I'm just, these are just some questions that I have. Also, one other thing that I wanted to point out was Bus Stop. I think the Bus Stop is right in front of Grace Preschool. And I'm just wondering if this program does, you know, go forward, if it could be, in fact, moved, or, I don't know, I just feel like it's not conducive to the setting of the preschool. Financially, I think the preschool would struggle, you know, I sent my kids there, they're, they're no longer there, but, you know, these are livelihoods of, you know, daycare teachers and the preschool, so if this is gonna move forward, I just would like to see some conditions being met, and thought about.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, but those are all valid questions. All of residents, we, we screen the residents, do Cory checks, no sex offenders, and like I said before, I'm not, I'm not a program person, and, and our plan is to have a, a more comprehensive kinda neighborhood meeting to talk about the program and, and make everyone really understand it.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, so, that, that is on the table, you know, when, when we were looking at this site, you know, when I worked with Father Al for a long time, right, Father Al? Took a while to get it done, you know, these questions came up, and we, we worked with the church to, so they fully understood what the program was gonna be. I think I, I gave you something about doing the, the checks, on the Cory checks, but, you know, this is a professionally managed building, yes, there's one resident manager, but it's, you know, monitored twenty-four, seven, you know, program managers are always on call, you know, it's a professional real estate management company, and, and it's got the program element to it, and all of that is twenty-four, seven, so you've got a, a resident manager there who can make a phone call, but in general, you know, these, these programs work really well, and we, of course, you know, we have this good neighbor policy in place, that we would work with the neighbors to, you know, we don't, we don't want people hanging out on the front porch either, you know, there'll, there'll be a designated spot out back for them to, you know.
So, you would enforce that, and, and again, I'm, we're getting into an area, and I guess, this is the only forum that people like that lady just came up and has a chance to speak, right? There's no one, so, I guess, the chairman's being fair with everybody and letting people talk about things that really aren't under our purview, but, and I, but I do think you do have a responsibility to answer those questions.
Great.
So, number one, there will be no sex offenders here at all.
No.
Number two, you will put a designated area where the people hang out, probably in the back of the building.
Yep.
So, they won't be hanging out in the front, 'cause that was a concern that someone else had.
We have a patio.
It's like this new patio.
Patio is planned right now, after we get through with the lane parking lot, we'll have to.
But, but the key to this, it's nice to have those rules, the key is enforcement, and, and I have talked to somebody that was familiar with the one in Milbury, and they said, when it was opened up, beginning was terrible, but either you changed the management or something, because they did say it got better, and she brought up some issues of, there were five calls since the beginning of the year, but a lot of this, I think, we can put all the rules and regulations in we, we want, but if you don't enforce them, it's not gonna work out. Do you have any other questions, ma'am? As, as far as the fence goes, I guess as part of the site plan, we could ask them to put up a, a fence between the school and the church, whether we can make them do it or not, I don't know, but that's something we could certainly ask, right, Rich?
Is it on their, their plan?
I, I don't know, but we can ask, I guess.
No.
Not on the property.
No, it's not on the plan.
There is one by, next to the proposed.
There is next to the proposed back, and there is a fence now, but I don't think it's. Well, there's a new one.
No, it's a, it's a picket fence.
All right, there's a new one proposed on the plan, privacy fence.
Rich, we got another guest.
Yes.
I'm Karen Esposito, my parents own two sixty-four Main Street, which is right next door. Obviously, I have some life concerns that the prior speaker had with respect to the day, uh, daycare right next door. My parents are elderly, I run an office right next door, I have some real concerns about the amount of people coming in, going out, parking, I know, is a, is a huge issue, but I also have some questions regarding a privacy fence. I certainly would like to see a privacy fence along two sixty-four to two sixty-six. I know in other towns where there are similar buildings and residences nearby, they've been able to have twelve-foot privacy fences, I would certainly be looking for something like that on behalf of my parents. I'd also be curious, and I know, again, this isn't the forum, but I figure, kinda air some of the questions and concerns that we have, is this going to be coed, is it going to be single-sex, sixteen beds, one resident person living there, I think one on fifteen, if it's coed, that's not a good mix. Certainly having a set area where people can congregate, I have a real concern about smoking, is smoking gonna be allowed on the property? If so, where? You've got a daycare on one side, that's a serious issue. I, myself, have serious asthma issues, I cannot be around it, again, why I'd be looking for a twelve-foot privacy fence. Is it going to be a locked facility? Are they going to have an ability to kinda come and go anytime? And educationally, what are the hours of operation, what kind of classes are you looking to have there? And I guess the biggest question that I have right now would be, is it going to be any kind of a clinic where there may be methadone being given out, like the one in Southridge?
Again, I mean, those are all important questions, and like I said, we're gonna have a, a larger meeting to address the, the program, the, the specifics of the program. It's not gonna be a methadone clinic, these people are in sobriety, they made a commitment to, to live, you know, soberly, these people are, are trying to, you know, go to work every day and get their lives in order, so, you know, for all the other questions around the program, I think it, it's, we should just wait and have the, the neighborhood meeting, and, and we can.
Is it gonna be coed?
Uh, probably.
And, and for myself, I mean, that would help determining parking spaces, too, what kind of programs are gonna be run there, who's gonna be coming, you know?
I did find in a memo from Town Council regarding the number of staff, and it says, it's in the second paragraph, "The facility will be staffed and managed, and is, will be staffed by a manager and an assistant manager at all times." So, he's telling us it's gonna be two people there all time, so, if you're saying there'll be one person sleeping there, but there'll be another person coming in at night from three to eleven, I mean, that's what we're being told, there'll be two people there at all times, a manager and an assistant manager.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm not really sure with that.
I mean, that would be something that, again, it's technically not under our thing, but in fairness to the people that are here, we, we would try to answer somebody's question.
And the type of programs being run, too, and who's coming, that's all part of.
Right, Ken just brought up an important point, that we, we always, there is one resident manager, but there's always an assistant resident manager, so that's.
So, there will be two people.
So, that's another space.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, I'm practicing.
Yes.
Thank you, hi, Mark Mercadante, I'm here basically because my, my granddaughter goes to school next door, and, and I, I know that you're here under a site plan review process, so it's, it's probably an approved use, and your, your situation is parking and, and layout and, and number of bedrooms, and how that's all gonna get facilitated, but quite frankly, it, it's a, a serious issue with four- and five-year-olds, three, four, five-year-olds next door. You know, I mean, I, I understand that there's a, a very big need for halfway houses and, and people that are in rehab, but there's also a, a very big need with, you know, kids that are just getting into their educational process, and that's very important to me. You know, it, it's personal to me, because my granddaughter goes to school there, but, but I also think that, you know, if you're in a position to have to approve something like this, I mean, I'm opposed to it, but, but if you're in a position where this is an approved use, and you, you need to approve it, then, then I think that there needs to be a lot of conditions associated with it. You know, parking is one, if there's sixteen patients, or, or clients, or whatever they wanna call them, there should be sixteen spaces, if there's, if, you know, there's handicap requirements, there should be a, a handicap requirement space, if there's employees, I mean, one employee for sixteen people, I don't know that that's appropriate, I don't know what the law is, or what the requirements are, but, again, we have a preschool next door. So, parking is certainly a concern, but, but, but also, there, there, um, these children's protections are a concern, you know, they, um, they, they should have some privacy, I think there should be a fence, I think that there needs to be a lot of conditions associated with this approval. Fence, visual access, you know, their access to the outside, if they smoke, if they, they hang around outside, I mean, I, I don't know that it's healthy for them to, to be in an environment with these children. So, so I, I advocate that you hear what the other people have been saying, but, but also, you know, add, add some conditions that are, that are going to protect these kids, you know, you know, one potential here is that windows that, that access the building next door from, from your property, you know, that, that are directly associated with where these kids are, are going to school, I mean, can they be adjusted, or, or closed, or, or modified, I don't know, you know, I mean, maybe these are peripheral issues associated with the project, but, but, but it's one concern, you know, I, I'm sure that when they're in projects like this, they're probably drug-tested and, and that sort of thing, I don't know how that works, the speaker earlier has a little bit more knowledge in the social, the professional social field than, than I do, but, but things like drugs, weapons, and, and all of that, I don't know what kind of conditions you can put into it, but, but generally speaking, you need to separate, I think, the, the one property versus another, and, and, you know, one way is to put the parking on the other side, another way is to put, put a, a fence between the properties, and I don't know what other conditions that you can put into the approval process, but maybe certain hours where they can, you know, congregate outside, I mean, you know, when do these, when do the kids next door go to school? They're going to school in the morning, so maybe there's certain conditions that you can associate with your approval that, that would address that, so. I throw that out there because I, I think that the whole community needs to be protected, and, and certainly, they have rights, but so don't the people that, and, and kids that have already been there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, in my opinion, the safety issue is a major, major issue, and needs to be resolved and controlled completely, as a major yes-or-no condition.
But how do you do that, though, Al?
That's a good question, Mark.
It has to be looked, has to be looked into.
Is it another board that has a responsibility to do that? Let me ask you a question, you've heard people say, hold on, Mark, they want a fence on either side, would you have a problem doing that? Putting up an eight-foot vinyl, or whatever, twelve, we can talk about what size.
That's something we could talk about.
Stockade fence on either side to protect the children on one side, and the residents on the other.
We could talk about that.
You know, I mean, I don't think any request you've gotten so far has been unreasonable, I really don't, I, I, you know, I mean, there's questions I'd love to ask you, okay, but I'm not gonna read this paragraph right now, but we are very, very limited as to what we could ask. When I first saw the, oh, I get the, I wanna, is there a curfew, oh, and I read this thing from Town Council, it's like, you really can't ask that, but that doesn't mean during a public hearing that we can try to address some of the issues that people have, like a fence, and put that back into our site plan approval. So, I think there are some things that you folks are asking that I would feel comfortable putting on the site plan, but you need to know that they have to agree to this. Maybe I will read you this paragraph, if you just, you know, "If the project does not comply with the lot area," this is from Town Council, "If the project does not comply with the lot area and parking requirements as determined by the board in accordance with the bylaws, the planning board must nonetheless waive the compliance with those requirements and grant site plan approval if the applicant can demonstrate that compliance would substantially diminish or detract from the proposed use without appreciably advancing municipal concerns, or the cost of the compliance would be disappropriate to the advancement of the municipal, municipal concerns." That's what we're up against, folks, okay? This was not a rule put in by the Oxford Planning Board, or the Selectman, or the Town of Oxford, these rules were put in by the federal government and by the state government. So, we would like to ask some of the questions that, that you have, but we can't address them right now, so we're asking the applicant, as a good neighbor, to put up a fence, to look at putting the parking in the back, and try to address some of the current concerns that you have, but that's the situation we're in right now, and it's just the way it is, Mark?
Yes, thank you, Norman, and, thank you.
I'm sorry, Rich.
Can you put conditions on your approval where, where it, it protects the four-year-old, really, I mean, they can't speak, honestly, they can't speak, and they're right next door, and they've been there for twenty-five years, they cannot speak for themselves, how do you protect them?
We can ask them to put up a fence.
That's about it, we, we can only do some generic stuff.
And if they say no, Mark, and they went to court, this is my interpretation of Town Council, I'm not a lawyer, and the Town Council says, you know what, that's too much money, they don't have to do it, I mean, that's the way, I mean, we have an attorney here, I, I don't know if I'm interpreting right, but that's basically what I'm getting from Town Council.
We're looking at a site plan.
Right, now, if, if, if part of the site plan is, is a fence, and they're willing to do it, great, if we can put in a designated area for smoking, we'll certainly try to do that, but you need to understand what, what we're, what our authority is based on the input we got from Town Council, and if anyone wants to have this, Mary did a nice summary of what we got from Town Council, it's two pages, and we also have a five-page letter from Town Council, if you wanna look in the details, it tells you what we can do, it gives you case study, different court cases that have happened over the years, to kinda, you know, verify what they're saying, so, we're doing the best they can, it seems like they're willing to consider a lot of this stuff, there has to be a forum somewhere where these people can go, though, and address these concerns, whether it's a neighborhood meeting, and I, I don't know who does that.
And they're, they're suggesting they're gonna do it.
And they're willing to do it.
Well, our concern is the four-year-old.
I'm sure it is, Mark.
And, and I have a personal interest in that.
The other problem, not, not to be quip about this, but, I don't know, if, if I, people might say, you know what, I'm not gonna send my child to that nursery school anymore, and they could end up going out of business because of it, I'm, I'm not promoting that, but that's another thing that could happen.
That would be too bad.
Sure would.
Because it's a good nursery school, my son went there, and my granddaughter went there.
Twenty-five years in business.
That's right, and I have two generations already going there, so, I just encourage your board to please, whatever, whatever conditions you can put on it, and I encourage you as well to, to, to protect the four-year-old, 'cause, 'cause they don't have a voice.
Understood.
That's my speech.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, sir.
My name's Mark Balistrachi, I'm also a resident of Oxford, one of the things I'd like the planning board to take into account is the winter we had this year, the snowfall. When I look at that plan, and I see the parking spaces, and I see the twelve-foot passage, two feet of snow. two feet of snow, three feet of snow?
Mm-hmm.
How many parking spaces are left? Three? So, when you're looking at parking as a whole, you're gonna address that issue as well, the place to put that extra snow. Because eventually, the spillout will be the street. The other thing I'd like to ask, you talked in percentages about parking, about your clients' parking. What percentages have, of your clients are recently out of prison? I'd like to find that, or something. And how will you police, or what can the town do if you do put a sex offender in there? What will be the ramifications as a program, and how will you address that internally? Because we could say, again, that we're not going to allow it, once the program is in operation, preventative measures need to be taken.
Enforcement.
I'd like those all to be considered, but please keep in mind the snow, the weather, all those things are gonna impact our...
Good point.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think you brought up a good point, and I, I thought of it in the beginning of part of the discussion.